The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Combe. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanye.
Present.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderman Orion. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Boyd. Ten present, you have corn.
A corn being present, we will be led in an opening reflection and prayer by the co-founder of the Very Asian Foundation, Michelle Lee, an observance of AANHPI Month.
My gosh, thank you, thank you so much. Happy Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. If that's not a mouthful, you can say AANHPI, which is also long. But thank you so much to Board President Megan Green for inviting me to address the board. I just want to say I am honored to be here as a near lifelong Missour- I was raised here in Missouri, but on the other side of the state, and then traveled for my job. But I'm also proud to be a mom and proud to be an Asian American in this city who is a first generation college student from a working class family, a Korean adoptee, an immigrant, and also a naturalized citizen. I'm also really proud to cover this city as a journalist and work with the city as a nonprofit co-founder of the Very Asian Foundation, or VAF for short. This month means so much to me, but also to the thousands of St. Louisans who contribute and thrive in this city and happen to be Asian, and, you know, just so proud of the work that you are doing every day for this city. So much has really changed since the first Asian, a Chinese migrant, came to this city in the 1850s, and yet so much work still needs to be done as well. But if, I'll just give you some, a rundown of some things that happened in the new- So on Tuesday, Tuesday actually marked the 50th year of the fall of Saigon, bringing 130,000 Vietnamese refugees to the United States, including thousands to St. Louis, and one of them is my executive producer, Tremon Nguyen, who is really a testament to how this city has supported her because she is in news management, and that is so rare, not only for this city, but the entire industry, to have an Asian American refugee leading a newsroom is so tremendous. And she just produced a special on the fall of Saigon that will air on Five Plus starting on May 6th, so please check it out. It is free to download on your TV. Today also, we featured a James Beard Award finalist named Jane Chatham, and she is the head chef of Visia, came up as a line cook, and now is the head cook. She is a native of the Philippines, representing St. Louis as one of the best emerging chefs in the entire country. Very proud graduate of St. Louis Community College, and really an example of a rising St. Louis star who's breaking barriers and taking untraditional paths to success, and that is greatness from Ward 9. So really appreciative of her. And then really quickly, on May 31st, Asian American groups will celebrate the honorary renaming of 8th Street Downtown to On Leong Way to celebrate the contributions of Chinese Americans who took stake in downtown Chinatown that lasted close to a century. And this is thanks to not only this board, but also to thank Peter Tao with the Chinese Collecting Initiative of the Missouri Historical Society, and OCA St. Louis, and Danny Poon with the Very Asian Foundation, and PAC St. Louis, and also KSDK who took the time to cover this as journalism, as a community service, and contact then Alderwoman, now Mayor Kara Spencer. But also because of the unanimous support of this board, we will be having a community celebration on May 31st, and would love to see you. And then, you know, I will say, we have a long way to go to understand and recognize civil rights and hidden Asian American lens and perspective in St. Louis. But I do a lot of school visits and donate books through VAF, and what strikes me the most is how much students, educators, and parents, and the community really want to learn more about our history and our collective contribution. And so it's amazing, VAF gave probably 200 books to St. Francis Cabrini, Ward 7, and that school is 30% Asian American, mostly Vietnamese and Burmese, and those are populations that sometimes traditionally face bigger wealth disparities than others in the Asian diaspora. So that's also in part to a model minority myth. But when you show up to a school and you give a student a book that represents their experiences and teaches their friends that their story matters, it leaves really an immeasurable impact on an entire student body. So our success is tied to everyone's success, our equity is tied to one another, and solidarity is not something new despite what you might see on TikTok. And so I do want to leave with a passage really quickly, I'm sorry I'm taking so long, but a passage out of a new book this week from The New Yorker's executive director, Michael Luoh, who actually just left St. Louis this morning after doing a book talk at the county library with VAF Ambassador Ruth Kim. But this book is called Strangers in the Land. It's a history of exclusion, belonging, and the epic story of Chinese Americans. And I'm not Chinese, but I do feel the sentiments of this book, so bear with me. Frederick Douglass, the former enslaved man and famed orator, became an unexpected advocate for the Chinese in America. When the Chinese first began arriving to the Pacific coast, his newspaper, Frederick Douglass's paper, based in New York City, had been critical of the governor's efforts to stop Chinese immigration and California lawmakers' discriminatory laws targeting the Chinese. "The relations between Black and white Americans had not been satisfactorily settled," Douglass said, "and now a new race is making its appearance within our borders and claiming attention." He urged the embrace of the Chinamen as a new element in our national composition, and predicted in the not-too-distant future that the Chinese population would number in the millions. Douglass believed it to be inevitable that the Chinese would cross the mountains, cross the plains, descend our rivers, penetrate to the heart of the country, and fix their homes with us forever. He reminded his audience that it was natural to feel repugnance for the foreigner, but the way to override that feeling was to work for the el- worthless, and thus make them worthy of regard, and they will become worthy and not worthless. Like a preacher employing his flock, Douglass urged Americans to work to overcome their darker passions. Do you ask if I favor such immigration? I would, I would answer yes. Would you have them naturalized and have them invested with all the rights of American citizenship? I would. Would you allow them to vote? I would. Would you allow them to hold office? I would. He rested his belief on basic human rights, the right of locomotion, the right of migration, the right which belongs to no particular race, but belongs alike to all and to all alike. And his hope was for the Chinese to feel at home here, he said, both for his sake and for ours. So I just wanted to share that this is something that Frederick Douglass was working on in the 1800s, and also because we had this migration in St. Louis as well. Again, I'm not Chinese, but I just was really inspired by this. So thank you so much for your time, thank you for your support, and for your continued solidarity.
We will dispense with line item four, any introduction of honored guests. Oh, sorry. At first, before we get to honored guests, we are all going to gather over to get a picture. Aldermen from the 3rd.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to have as my honored guest this morning, the Honorable Donna Behringer, the new comptroller for the city of St. Louis.
Yes, welcome, comptroller Behringer. If you would like to take a seat, you have a desk over here. Aldermen from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I also would like to have as my honored guest, my former colleague, a representative, as well as the new comptroller, comptroller Donna Behringer, as well as deputy chief up in the gallery, Mr. Jim, who is the deputy chief of the budget committee. If we can make them both feel welcome, I would appreciate it. And one more, we also have Ms. Joyce Roberts, former SLPS board member, and the mayor of the West Side, Justin Upther in the top gallery, if we also could make them feel welcome as well.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Alderman from the 14th, so both of my honored guests. So I would just say ditto, but anyway, welcome, Justin, my little, who I affectionately and dearly call my little brother on the West Side, of course, and to Dr. Roberts. Thank you for always being here. We can name you in more spaces than here. You're always in the community, you're always showing up. So again, these are my honored guests as well.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Monday, April 21st, 2025, and Friday, April 25th, 2025.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we approve the minutes from Monday, April 21st, 2025, and Friday, April 25th, 2025.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we approve the minutes from Monday, April 21st, 2025, and Friday, April 25th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, C, and D of the agenda that has been placed in the Google Drive for your review.
We can dispense with line items seven through 11. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 1, sponsored by President Green and Alderman Aldrich. In order to make an appropriation for payment of interest, expenses, and principal of the city bonded indebtedness, establishing city tax rates, and making appropriation for current year expenses of the city government containing an emergency clause, that's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
To the Budget and Public Employees Committee, Board Bill 1, that's the extent of reference to Committee of Board Bills.
Second reading, report of standing committees.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 14, report of special committees.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 15, board bills for perfection consent.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 16, board bills for perfection.
We have none.
Can dispense with line item 17, report of engrossment.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 18, third reading and final passage of board bills consent.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 19, third reading and final passage of board bills.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 20, reported, the finally passed, and signed by the president.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 21, first reading of resolutions of reference to committees.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 22, second reading, resolutions, committee reports, and adoptions.
Report from the Personnel Committee.
At this time, I will entertain a motion that the meeting of the full Board of Aldermen be closed to the public under the provisions of 610.0213 and 610.022 of the Missouri Revised Statute, in order to permit the members of the board to discuss matters related to the hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of employees of the Board of Aldermen. I need a motion first. Okay, it's been, you want a second now?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 1st, seconded by the Alderman from the 13th, that we go into closed session, or sorry, 14th. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Combe. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanye.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alder, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldrich.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Combe. Thirteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion. STLTV, if you could please place us in closed session. At this time, any people that are not members of the Board of Aldermen or Clerk Rogers need to exit the, the board or the gallery. Okay.
We are back. Courtesy resolutions.
We have none.
Can dispense with line item 24, miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Can dispense with line item 25, announcements.
Monday, May 5th, Budget and Public Employees will have a hearing in the Kennedy Room at 9:30. Tuesday, May 6th, Budget and Public Employees will have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at 9:30. Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, Budget and Public Employees will have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at 9:30. And Friday, May 9th, full board meeting in the chambers at 10:00 a.m. That's the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. As we entered into month of May, Mental Health Awareness Month, I want to announce first, hopefully everyone will afford everyone a little bit of extra grace. You never know what someone is going through. You never know what your smile, the difference that may make, the time you may take to listen. And speaking of listening, in the 10th board, we have the Sidewalk Talk Listening Bus Tour that's being put on by our Mental Health Board, Black Healers Collective, Empower, People's Community Health Centers, the I Define Me Movement, and our Department of Health here in the city of St. Louis. It's "We Don't Listen and We Don't Judge" A Listening Talk Tour on May 6th from 4:00 to 7:00. It starts at 5701 Dalemore and goes north on the Greenway Trail. And this will just be a good time to come, not only to commune and fellowship, but also help each other because we have learned that one of the things, the best things you can do for someone is listening. Thank you.
Any further announcements, Alderman from the 14th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. This Saturday, May 4th, at the Polish Heritage Center, starting at 12:00 p.m., fax will be dedicating a historic marker for the Purit Igo site. We had Mr. Ben here last week, but just wanted to invite everybody out from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. Again, there will be a lot of events going on. There'll be a march, there'll be DJ, there'll be some food trucks. And we will eventually dedicate and install a historic marker for the Purit Igo site that once used to be there. And then also, I want to invite everyone out again, Monday, May 5th, roughly around 11 o'clock. The Budget Committee will not just be kicking off at 9:30, but we'll be kicking off the budget session, making sure that we hear from the public. So any and everybody that wants to comment on the budget, please come around 11:00, or you can come at 9:30 to hear the whole presentation from Paul Payne. But to make sure that your voice is heard, we wanted to start off the Budget Committee by actually listening to the community. So please come. It'll be in the Kennedy Room. We'll have a presentation by Paul Payne at 9:30, and then roughly we'll hear from the public at 11:00. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th. You are recognized on the... Alderwoman from the 7th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Tomorrow will be Cinco de Mayo on Cherokee Street, so definitely want to announce that. You know, we took some measures last year following a shooting incident that happened the year prior. There were new security protocols. If you are on some of the streets near Cherokee that are going to be blocked off so that we know the entry points moving near that street. And there also will be checks. When you come into Cherokee, you will have to go through certain security checkpoints just to make sure that there are no weapons and certain things within the vicinity. There's also a clear end time. Sometimes there are incidents that happen after the festival happened because people linger. So we just want to be clear that, you know, it is very organized, made very secure. There will be children and families there. We want to keep that culture, so we want to make sure they're safe. And also that when the activities are up, it will be time to go. There's also going to be the People's Parade portion that will be at 2:00 that day. And so just wanted to make sure we uplifted that parade starts at 2:00 and goes until 3:30, so to come out to that portion. And I also did want to announce that we have a, starting officially today, director. We have a new CEO for St. Louis Development Corporation. And yesterday, the board did vote in a six to one vote to move forward with separating and going mutual ways with Neil Richardson. So definitely want to encourage members of the public and any of my colleagues who've had, you know, a good relationship with Mr. Richardson, to reach out to him, to thank him for his service to our city, and just send any well wishes and positive thoughts to him at this time. Thank you.
Need further announcements? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th. You are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. All members were present this morning.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Friday, May 9th, 2025, in the Board of Aldermen Chambers.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th. We adjourn until Friday, May 9th, 2025, in the Board of Aldermen Chambers at 10:00 p.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.